Let's make no mistake that we just had the most conservative and most productive session in history. The governor, and the speaker, and I worked well together. In fact, better than the senate and the house has ever worked together. In fact, on SB 3, between the two chambers, there are 108 Republicans, and I think the count is 105 voted for SB 3. Virtually every police department in the state of Texas wrote a letter to the governor and asked him to not veto SB 3. They gave every reason, by the way, to every pushback by the hemp industry. The Pediatric Association came out in favor of SB 3. Texas Medical Association came out in favor of SB 3. This is not a Dan Patrick bill. This is a bill that reasonable people in professions that know best, from medicine to law enforcement to education, said they all support. And 105 members, mostly all Republicans, but in the senate, we had a number of Democrats who voted for it. It puzzles me why my friend, Greg Abbott, Governor Abbott, would at the last minute, at about 22 minutes after 11, decide to veto this bill. I know he gave the reasons in his proclamation, but our team simply doesn't agree with those reasons, and we'll talk through that. In reading the proclamation, one can only come to this conclusion, which surprises me. The governor of the state of Texas wants to legalize recreational marijuana in Texas. That's the headline, folks, because that's what his proclamation does. Now, whether it's unintentional, and he didn't think through it, or whether it's intentional, that's the result of the veto. I'm very concerned that we go through this period of time that these shops may stay open, continuing to spew out their poison. Because even if his proposed bill passed as he suggests, it would take a lot of time for them to get up to speed, to have manufacturing testing, to test it at all levels, to go through all of the issues that he lays out. And during that time, they would still be operating as they are. Let's remember, in 2019, marijuana was not legal in Texas. We passed the hemp bill, and then new technology came out on Delta 8 and Delta 10, and bad actors, he called them bad actors, he calls them bad actors, as I have, went around that. And they sold products that destroyed families, destroyed families. And make no mistake, what they're selling is illegal today. This past Tuesday, or I guess it was this past Tuesday, today's a few days from then, we had a bust, a drug bust, by the Allen Police Chief and the Department of Enforcement for Drugs, DEA. They confiscated 34 tons of products, including 7 million in cash jewelry cars, and they have seized that place. 34 tons. A few weeks ago, Prosper graduation ceremony sent seven kids to the hospital who'd induced these gummies, or some type of THC product. And then, as he notes in his proclamation, "A 15-year-old shot his mother three times after having gummies." And we had this testimony from, you know, that's who I feel badly for. Someone texted me this morning and said, "Dan, I feel badly for you." I said, "Don't feel badly for me. I'm used to tough political fights. The governor and I will work together in the future, and we'll disagree from time to time. But this is a fight that didn't need to be." Aubrey Adams came in and testified. She said, "The veto demonstrates that the interests of the hemp THC industry are prioritized over the safety of Texas children and the well-being of Texas schools." Again, what Governor Abbott proposes is for us to legalize marijuana in Texas by regulating it. Let me walk through a couple of notes from his proclamation. He says, "Texans on each side of Senate Bill 3 debate raise serious concerns. But one thing is clear: to ensure the highest level of safety for minors as well as for adults who obtain a product more dangerous than what they expected, Texas must strongly regulate hemp and do so immediately." The best way to protect the adults and the children is to ban the product. Is to ban the product. You cannot regulate 8,000 to 9,000 locations. We do not have enough law enforcement to do so. And they'll continue to sell it, skirting the law. And actually, what will they be selling? If the governor is correct in his proclamation? He says, "Senate Bill 3 is well-intentioned, but it would never go into effect because valid constitutional challenges, litigation challenging the bill has already been filed." Since when did we care who sued us when we passed a bill? Oh, someone's already sued us. Oh, gotta stop. I'm sure, if they haven't already, they're gonna sue us on school choice and the 10 amendments. And they're gonna file a bill on the prayer bill. We deal with lawsuits all the time. So that shouldn't be a surprise. He says, "If we were to allow Senate Bill 3 to become law, its enforcement would be enjoined for years." How does he know that? How's he know that? And how's he know what he proposes won't, there won't be a lawsuit filed and enjoined for years? The federal law says this: "Nothing in the federal law preempts or limits any law of a state that regulates the production of hemp and is more stringent than the federal law." That's what the federal law says. We can ban, we can regulate, and be more stringent than federal law. How do I know we can ban? Because there are already a number of courts that have said so. The Fourth Circuit, the Seventh Circuit, California, Gavin Newsom, of all people, banned THC. They've got a big drug program out there, but they banned THC because it was too dangerous. So was Colorado, and they've got a big drug program because of its danger. So, the governor's whole proclamation is built around, and he told me this on Sunday, I talked to him yesterday, he said, "It's the Arkansas case." This was a lowly district judge in Arkansas, and has been going through the courts. We believe the Eighth Circuit will stand with Arkansas. And so if that happens while we're going through this charade, then what's the governor going to say? "Oh, I guess I was wrong about Arkansas." But even if Arkansas loses, it doesn't matter. Arkansas does not impact Texas. So the idea that we can't ban the product has already been upheld by the higher courts on multiple occasions. There's no justification saying that we can't ban it. He goes on to say, "My conclusion or the conclusion is not speculative." Really? So, he's perfect. He's not wrong. He's absolutely sure this bill would be thrown out. When you look at the law, again, what the federal law says, we can ban it. The only thing we can't do is stop transportation through the state. You know, he actually mentions that in his proclamation. He mentions that one of the problems with this bill is about stopping transportation. But he didn't write the entire sentence. He's the lawyer, not me. It says, "You can't pass a bill to ban transportation through a state." That's not what he wrote. The teacup program, he signed that bill, that's worthless now. Here we pass maybe the best teacup program, Texas for Compassionate Use, to address those with PTSD, cancer, Crohn's disease, we added. Who's gonna go there now? When they can go to any smoke shop and get what they want? That's why no one drew their licenses before. So at the end of the day, what puzzled me was, the last time I talked to the governor in the Capitol before session, he said, "Don't worry about the bill." He said, "Your bill is fine." That's what he told me, in front of witnesses. In fact, he asked a couple of lawyers on my staff, he said, "Can you give me some answers I can give, because when I sign this, I need some answers to give?" So what happened? Who convinced him? On his staff, from the outside? To kill Senate Bill 3? You know, and I, look, we'll work with the governor. We'll see what happens in the special session. But where has he been all session? Where's he been? I mean, we get this proclamation from him last night after midnight, and he parachutes in at the last moment with arguments that we do not think are valid. I mean, he talks about the takings, for example. "Well, we can't have a takings here. It's one of the reasons we have to, I have to veto this bill." But yet, in his own proclamation, one of the things he lists is, "We will not allow hemp and vape shops near schools or churches." So he's gonna take them? He's gonna tear up their lease? Tell them they gotta move? I think that's a takings. I think he might be sued over that. He talks about, basically, that we have to leave the status quo where it is. In other words, if we regulate this, and what do you regulate? You regulate things that are legal. And that's why I said, and I'm stunned, I'm stunned, that he wants to legalize marijuana in the state of Texas. So I'm not having a bad day. Texas is having a bad day. Because if we become Washington State, or Oregon, or Colorado, on products that we cannot possibly test in 8,000 or 9,000 locations, with the small law enforcement we have doing their best, you can hit one here, one there, he's going to allow them to sell above the .3, the .3 percent, which is in federal law. That's what his proclamation says. So why doesn't he just come out? I hope he'll make a statement today and say, "Yes, the lieutenant governor is right. I am for legalizing marijuana for adults in the state of Texas." Because that's news to me. It was news to me when he changed his position on casino gambling. It was news to me when he changed his position on sports betting, which don't have the votes in legislature either. Who are we as a state? We think we're gonna attract business here if we got a bunch of people high on marijuana at very high levels? Is that who wants to come here and build their plant here, open up a business, move their family here? We're not Colorado, and we're not Oregon, and we're not Washington State. We're Texas. And I will not sign a bill that legalizes marijuana in Texas. I will not gavel it down. Because that's what he's asking the legislature to do. And here's the box he's put us in, folks. This is the box. So when he says he just came to it, you know, he told me, "Well, I just kinda made the decision Saturday, and this came late." Again, where was his staff, and where was he? If he'd have worked with us through the session, maybe we could have addressed some of his issues, and maybe we could have answered some of his questions. But he made a decision to veto this bill very late, without even giving us the courtesy of a call to say, "Hey, can you clarify this for me?" So, I just need to let you all know that here's the box he created. If we don't pass a bill, if we don't pass a bill that regulates hemp and marijuana, then the status quo continues in those 8,000 shops, and they keep selling all this poison, and kids keep getting sick, and parents keep losing their children, and people walk out in front of trains and people shoot somebody. And by the way, if that happens, I'm sorry, Governor, it's not on us. We'd abandon it. So if we don't pass a bill, if we don't pass a bill, the status quo continues. And the bad actors, as he calls them, the people running those three warehouses up there with 34 tons of illegal products, they get to continue operating as they are near our schools. But if we pass a bill as he recommends, then we're legalizing marijuana. So he's put the legislature in a very bad position. Like I said, politics can be hardball. I respect the governor. I'm not a lawyer. He's a Supreme Court judge, former Attorney General, but his argument is flawed. Other courts, circuit courts, have ruled we can ban the product in states. We're not, and other courts have ruled, the Supreme Court has ruled, it's not a taking if you take something illegal from someone. He worries about the hemp farmers. Our bill doesn't even mention the hemp farmers. We deal with consumable products, and he throws in healthcare products and those. Ours dealt with drugs and food primarily. So there's nothing in his proclamation to me that makes any sense. It contradicts itself. And it looks like someone on his staff just lifted the TABC Code, Texas Alcoholic and Beverage Commission, and put it into his proclamation. It says, "Stores will be closed on Sundays. Stores can only be open 10 to 9." That's right out of the TABC Code on liquor stores, packaged goods stores. He says, "We will regulate it, that you are limited to your purchases. You can only buy so many products." Wait for that lawsuit from someone. Are we gonna start limiting, you know, how many bottles of Jack Daniels you can buy? Or how many six-packs you can buy? None of his proclamation makes sense, to me, and to my legal team. Questions?
Do you see any middle ground between you and the governor? Or is this, you guys are polar opposite?
You know, we have lots of agreements and disagreements at any time of session. We usually find common ground. But this veto, this late, after he told me he was gonna sign it, "Your bill's fine." And he told me yesterday, "Well, after I looked at it, there's some problems here." Problems that we answered, all the questions, and he still vetoed the bill. So, I didn't start this. I did my work. We did our legal work. We talked to lawyers. We made sure this was constitutionally sound. We didn't have anyone that we talked to in the legal profession that said this was not constitutionally sound.
Is this an outlier, or has a similar issue that you were totally invested in been vetoed by the governor?
Well, last session, last session, we had the homestead exemption in the two special sessions. And it wasn't a veto, but he didn't like the $100,000 on a homestead exemption, and so he refused to put it on the call. You can look it up. He didn't put it on the first call. He didn't put it on the second call. And finally, the former speaker and myself said, "We're gonna pass it." And I don't know if he signed it or let it become law. So, different. But that was one of those things where I was surprised too, because everybody wanted the $100,000 homestead exemption, except the governor. And now it's $200,000 for seniors. He didn't say anything this year. And it's 140 for everybody else. So this is similar, but that wasn't a veto. But in that, in that case, last year, he never said to me he was with me on it. So, so that was his right. He, look, he can do anything he wants, he's the governor. Again, we'll work together in the future, and there's no personal hard feelings here. But I gotta stand up for the people of Texas. And the people of Texas do not want us to legalize marijuana.
So are you saying they're gonna refuse to regulate it?
The only way you can regulate it is for him to say that no product could be sold with more than 3 percent, and that it would be taxed very heavily. Because that would put them all out of business. Because they're not interested in selling products under 3 percent. They're interested in selling products sky-high in THC.
Could you support that kind of bill? Is that the bill that's gonna come out of this?
I have no idea. I'm staying with the ban. Because that, we can't, Rudy, we cannot regulate. And even if you go to 3 percent, there will be bad actors. You cannot regulate 8,000 stores. Law enforcement knows that. So you can't regulate it. And that, and we talked about it during session, can't do it. And the members decided, the only way we can address this is to ban it.
Governor, we regulate alcohol. We keep the high levels of alcohol.
Yeah, and you know what? And you know, it's a great point, I'm glad you brought that up. Because one of the things that someone on the TABC told me, "Thank goodness you're doing this, because we couldn't possibly inspect it. Because we don't inspect liquor. We don't go and open a bottle of Jack Daniels and see if it's the real deal. We don't take a taste test, or some kind of test on Crown Royal to see if it's the real deal."
It's on the thousands of Texans that...
And so, excuse me, one second. I haven't finished. Excuse me, one sec, excuse me, one second. Because they don't do it, because these are corporations, major companies, they know if they don't make sound products, they'll be sued. If they cause any injury or death, they follow their regulations. We don't know who's making any of this. We don't know where it's coming from. Nobody knows what's in the packages. So the idea that somehow we're gonna have this new testing, and they're all gonna be responsible for their own factories to test the products, and he also says in here, "It can't look like anything that would attract a child." Well, that's in the eye of the beholder. So now we're gonna get into, we're gonna get into telling you, "Well, that package, I'm sorry, gotta take that off the shelf." I mean, it's ridiculous to think that even the state of Texas, with 80,000 law enforcement officers, that we can inspect 8,000 to 9,000 shops. It's not possible.
Governor, speaking of special sessions, there's been reports of push from the Trump administration to add a special session for redistricting here. You did NCR recently. We had a chance to talk with anyone from the administration about that, look.
I'll just say that if we can pick up Republican seats in Texas to make Congress stronger, after what the Democrats did to our country in the last four years, and what they're still doing, criticizing the President of the United States, wanna impeach him for protecting American lives by taking out an Iranian nuclear threat to the world, I want more Republican congressmen.
Governor, you said that it was news to me when Governor Abbott changed his position on casinos. That could be...
Yeah. Well, he said, when we ran in '15, he said, "I'm not for expanded gambling, and I'm not for legalizing marijuana." And I sit here now, he came out and said, you know, "If they pass a bill on casinos, I'll look at it." Which is very clever. This session, he started by saying, "I think we should have a vote on sports betting." And now he's, I mean, if I'm wrong, Governor, and you're watching, then please put out a statement that you do not want to legalize marijuana for adults in the state of Texas. Because that's what, either by default you're doing, or on purpose you're doing.
On the SB 3 veto, do you think any of the recent polling includes the governor on this issue?
Look, the polling from the, the other side has done a great job, a great job of manufacturing all kinds of people to fight for their illegal business. I'm telling you again, folks, everything, or virtually everything they're selling in these shops is illegal today. If I can get a couple of state troopers and go down to a store today, we will find illegal products. That's what they found up in the warehouse. Everything they tested in the warehouse, everything they tested in the warehouse was illegal. And they took 34 tons of it.
How vetoed, uh, the 34 tons, the rate...
It doesn't, doesn't impact that. They broke the law up there, or allegedly. It will have to go to court. Doesn't change. It was illegal Tuesday, it's illegal today, it will be illegal next week. Under federal law. Under federal law, it's illegal. So, I really, I don't know what else you can do. 105 out of 108 Republicans vote. I think the governor should give the benefit of the doubt to the legislature, and to law enforcement, and to everyone in medicine, and everyone in education. He's the only guy. He's the only guy that didn't want this bill to pass, except the people in the business making a fortune off poisoning our kids.
Is an override an option in a special? Or is there some question about whether that's a possibility?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think that we can in a special, but I don't know. I'd have to check that. But, you know, we could just repeal the, we could just go, we could just pass a bill to repeal the bill we passed, and that would put an end to it.
You just threw that map through the window there. What is the possible outcome if you take the decision?
Yeah, what are the options to that?
To ban it.
Again?
Look, we had 105 votes.
Pass another ban? Is it possible?
Pass another bill. Now, he didn't put that on the call, he said, "Regulation." His words were very careful. Deal with the regulation. So, so he's, again, I don't wanna complicate this, he's talking about getting kids out of it, you know, doing all the things to keep kids away from it, move all the stores. Again, this would be a takings, in my view, that he could get sued over. Taking, moving all these stores away from churches, and parks, and schools, to wherever he's gonna move them. And again, you just don't go and tear up a lease. They have these leases. It's the product in the store that's the problem, not where the store is.
Sir, have you spoken to Governor Abbott since the veto?
Uh, no, no. I thought for sure that, after we talked yesterday, and we had a very amiable discussion. Look, I'm not mad at the governor. I'm not mad at the governor, but I'm not gonna legalize marijuana in Texas. And if people wanna vote me out of office for that, so be it. Not gonna do it.
Governor, I spoke with someone in the hemp industry today, and they told me that through DHS, they are already regulated, the agreements are already tested, and it's, what they're offering is legal.
BS, BS on all of it. Then why has everybody that's gone into a store found illegal products? Why have they been confiscated? And why, and why did DEA come in? And look, here's the other thing. We have no idea who's making this product. Are they terrorists? Is this a terrorist money laundering scheme in Texas? Is it a cartel money laundering scheme? You know, someone told me, "I better watch my step." That's what someone told me. "I better watch my step." Because this whole idea by the, the industry, again, saying, "Well, these are mom and pop businesses." No, they're not. There may be a few. This is all orchestrated. As I said, over three or four years, 8,000 to 9,000 shops opened up, they all look the same, they all have the same products, they all have the same footprint, they're all built in the same spot around schools, or most of them. No, that wasn't a coincidence, Rudy. That's organized crime behind it. Very likely, very likely.
Are you saying you would...
When someone tells you to watch your step, you can read that how you want.
And with that, are you concerned about losing votes, given the very public backlash that the bill got, and these threats that you're talking about? Are you worried that you're not gonna have as many votes in a special session for outright ban?
Not votes for you, but votes for...
Yeah, look, I'm not sure what the members are going to do. That will be up to them. But they will understand they're casting a vote to legalize marijuana in Texas. I don't know how they'll react. But I'm not.
Governor...
I will not be on the podium. If their votes are there, and I always follow the will of the senate, and the senate wants to vote for it, that's up to them. It would have to have 15 Republican votes. Out of 19 members, we're down one now with Kelly Ancott gone, so it has to meet that threshold on any bill. I don't know if there are 15 to legalize marijuana. I don't wanna do that to my state. And look, I know, this is what confused me about the governor. He doesn't wanna do that either. I mean, he makes my argument in his proclamation. Bad actors, the bad things that are happening to kids. And so his answer is, "Well, we're gonna stop the kids, we'll just regulate them. We'll legalize them." And I don't think he's ever run on that platform. I doubt if he'd run on it this year, when he's running for governor. I'd be surprised, but maybe he will, maybe I'm just, maybe I missed a step.
Will you support a senate bill to have a hearing in the senate, or will you wait for a House bill to come to the senate?
Rudy, I won't speculate. We have a ways to go, a lot, a lot to do. But I personally, my, I mean, what kind of, what kind of state do we want? What kind of culture do we want? Do we want everybody high? I mean, everyone will tell you in those other three states, work product has gone down, everywhere you go, it smells like grass. It's awful. The last time I went to Colorado, I didn't wanna go back anymore. I don't want that for Texas. You know, gaming and sports betting, that, look, that's a, that's a people's choice, whatever they wanna do. If that happens, it happens. But this is life and death. This is life and death, Rudy. This destroys lives. This reaches a whole nother level.
Last question. Do you plan to speak with Governor Abbott ahead of a special session on this issue to make your points, and then try to...
Yeah, look, I wanna repeat. I'm not, I'm not angry with him, but I'm not happy that he vetoed it how he did it. I would, I would be untruthful if I said, "Oh, that's fine. To do it 11:22 at night, I really..." To do it 11:22 at night, I really felt sorry for all those people that came and testified that poured their hearts out. I felt sorry for law enforcement trying to do their job. You have to respect the legislature. And if it was a clear argument here, I would say, "Okay, Governor. Good point." I'll give you an example. I wasn't with him on the, the cybersecurity bill he won at the end. Because he didn't talk about it the whole session, and suddenly he wanted to pass it at the end. And I said, "Governor, I don't know anything about it. Why are we putting it at UTSA? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that?" I said, "Give me something." I took it home, I read it for the week, and I came back and said, "I'm with you. You made your point." Where was he on this bill? He could've talked to us at any time. The Speaker, myself, members, he didn't ever discuss this. And then to parachute in at the last moment over the will of the Senate and the House with arguments, again, other courts have said you can ban it. We're not, our bill doesn't impact farmers at all, because, you know, he deals with drugs and food, consumables. The law before 2019, when we passed the hemp bill, marijuana was illegal in the state. It's still illegal in the state. And he now wants to make it legal. By this veto, he has now put us in a box. If we do nothing, the status quo continues for the next two and a half years, three years, to the next session until you can pass a law, which would be devastating to families. Or we have to capitulate and vote for the lesser of two really bad evils. So that's, that's the box we're in. We'll, we will work through it, hopefully. But, you know, people can say what they want. It's not the state I want. I don't want my kids and my grandkids growing up where everybody's high. Because his bill, what his bill says, his bill, his proclamation, that this will be the high-level THC, because according to him, now that that's already happened, he quotes a case in there, that you can't go back and take that back, because that would be unfair, in essence. They've already built a business. They're already selling this terrible stuff. So we can't go back and take it from them. It's illegal, yes, we can.
You didn't get your film Senate bill passed. Can you comment on that? Your film Senate's bill was...
Hey, look, we had a good, we had a great session. The governor and I worked on everything. We passed probably more Senate priority bills than we've ever passed. I'm not arguing with that. But most of those bills, a few did, most of those bills weren't life and death. And didn't destroy families.
Thanks, everyone. What about, what have we got?
Thank you all.
Bail reform on a special session?
Yeah, I'd like to see the bail reform on a special session. Those two bills that didn't pass, Democrats, Democrats want to allow murderers who've already been charged once, get out of jail so they can kill again, and they can't stand up for that, or illegal immigrants who've done that, like they did to poor Jocelyn Nungary. I, I don't understand the humanity of that, quite frankly. Don't understand. We didn't have any problem with Democrats in the Senate voting for it. It's the House Democrats. So, thank you all very much. Hey, have a great summer, and we'll see what's next, right? All right, thank you all. Thank you.